I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two commissioners missing, Vice Chairman Lacks and Commissioners Flosser are missing, all the other commissioners are present. The minutes, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of March 18th, 2009.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the March 18th, 2009 meeting.
I'll second.
And a motion from Commissioner Miller, a second from Commissioner LoRitano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Joe, on the agenda, it says oh eight. Just thought I'd correct it for the future. Okay. Okay, if anybody would like to make a comment to the commission at this point in time on something that's a non-agenda item, feel free to make that. We have a little card here, they're outside. Nobody wants to do that, seeing none, we will close that part of the public comments. Disclosure of ex parte communication. Is there any ex parte communication?
None.
None on this side?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. We have two items. Sorry. We have two items that are on the agenda. They both are, I will read them for the record, and both are asking for continuances. The first item is case 093500001, the refinery Christian Church Special Use Permit. The staff has asked the commission to postpone this item until the May 20th meeting. And the second item is case 072000016, the Madera Rezone, and that has been requested by the applicant to be postponed until the June 17th meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Peters, sorry, little senior moment there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, five zero. Okay, new business. Case 082000013, the City Center Northwest Final Planned Area Development. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Brett Burningham is going to make the first presentation on this item. Take it away, Brett.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, members of the public. This is a request that was filed by the City of Goodyear for a final P A D zoning application to rezone approximately 40 acres of city-owned property from the Public Facilities District to final P A D to facilitate the development of the City Center Northwest District. And when we were before you last month with the City Center Specific Area Plan Amendment, we discussed the evolution of the city center. We discussed briefly how the concept of the city center master plan begun in the mid-eighties, and it then evolved to our general plans in 1998 and 2003, and then the specific area plan, which was approved in 2006. And now, we are very happy to be before you with the zoning application for the city center. And included with your staff report is a copy of the final P A D submittal. And that submittal, you'll note that it contains a development plan, it contains a conceptual site plan, which illustrates how the development is in compliance with the city center specific area plan. And I'd like to introduce two individuals at this time. I first want to introduce Brett Tullis, who is an architect with Carrier Johnson, and he is with the Langford Associates Development Team. I also want to acknowledge Mary Pam Pooh, who is kind of the lead project manager for the Langford Associates team. And with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Brett, who will walk us through a PowerPoint presentation and introduce the city center P A D.
Thank you, Brett. It's a pleasure to be here. Yeah, two Bretts. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you a little bit about what's been going on with the city center development. And I would like to take you through a little bit of where we've been and where we're going. So with that, let's break forth with no delay. As most of you know, the Northwest Quadrant is part of a larger development for the city center development, which is, our quadrant is the orange. Let me see if I can get the mouse going here, which, okay. I'm being very patient here. All right. Well, let's just go ahead. The, which, oh, I see it coming. There it is. Thank you, Brett. So as we see, this is the Northwest Quadrant of the site that we're talking about, bounded by Goodyear Boulevard, running to the north and west, as well as Estrella Parkway to the east and Yuma Road to the south, with the I-10 freeway north of that, and the stadium not too far to the south. As part of this larger city center development, there are certain themes that we've been working with. In the Northwest Quadrant, it is mainly a retail and civic development, and we are using the sun and shade, the sun and shade design theme as part of the development of that quadrant. The other adjacent quadrants are the hospitality to the west of our quadrant, and then the Business Park just to the south and east, and then the Residential to the south of the Northwest Quadrant. Part of what's going on here is there's a number of connections that are being made, particularly pedestrian connections, as well as view connections. There's an arroyo, which is the wiggly blue line that you see connecting all the four quadrants, that runs through the Northwest Quadrant as well, creating a pedestrian connection between all four quadrants, as well as the blue arrows, which are creating view corridors to the White Tank Mountains, as well as pedestrian corridors, again, sort of connecting the four quadrants back to one another via pedestrian and visual connection. You'll see up at the upper right-hand corner, there is an image of what the connection, the enhanced connection would be from the Northwest Quadrant to the University up at the top left. And then, then as you look down to the image on the bottom, the bottom right, that is what the diagonal scramble at the corner, the intersection of Yuma and Estrella would intend to be, as far as the character of that crossing, with enhanced paving and so forth to create a very comfortable pedestrian-friendly environment. Then moving a little bit into more the ground floor uses, the focus in this area is definitely on the civic and retail, and that's definitely part of the heart of the project, which is bounded by Main Street, which is, which is creating the corridor, the vehicular connection that bounds, that runs through the site and curves up and around. And the retail focus is mainly in that area, defined by, and I'll go through some of the pieces here. The blue is the civic use, which you're seeing is the City Hall and Library, as well as Performing Arts Center and Multi-Gen. And then the sort of slightly purple color is the retail portion, which you'll see focused a lot in that core area adjacent to Yuma and Estrella intersection. As we move away from there, we're starting to see some of the residential uses along Goodyear Boulevard in the orange color, as well as some of the smaller green areas, which are the office pieces of the uses, which create a mixed-use component to the, sort of the heart of the complex here. The gray areas are the parking structures, and you notice the parking structures are integrated into a mixed-use, in a mixed-use way, so that they're, they integrate a retail component or some other component residential into them, so that they create a much more sort of vibrant structure than what you'd normally see. And really, the result of what you're seeing is a really good mixed-use environment that creates a very, very pedestrian-friendly, very dynamic type of development, which really feeds back into supporting the open space that we've created with the Civic Park and the Civic Plaza, which I believe will be the next slide. There's approximately seven acres of open space in the Northwest Quadrant, consisting of, a big part is the Civic Park, which is a great, fantastic space for gatherings up to about 1,000 people, nice open lawn and open areas for different kinds of passive and active recreations. And then moving into the Civic Plaza, a little bit more urban, defined in this case by the City Hall and some of the retail environments surrounding it. And then, there's also the view corridor, which is, as I mentioned, not only a view corridor, but also a pedestrian path, taking you from the Entry Plaza at the corner of Yuma and Estrella, all the way through the site with views out to the White Tank Mountains, and creating, and helping to stitch not only the Northwest Quadrant to the other quadrants, but create a connection over to the University to the north of there. Talk a little bit about phasing. The, as I mentioned, the heart of the area is really the pieces that we're starting to look at now. In Phase One, what we'd be seeing is the two facilities that'd be going in would be the City Hall and the Library. The open space that would be provided would be the Civic Plaza, which is part of the City Hall, which is a fantastic piece to be introducing the first part, as well as Main Street, which is the curving street you're seeing, creating the edge for the City Hall, which is also a pedestrian-friendly street with diagonal parking and nice wide sidewalks and landscaping along it. And certainly, the diagonal has been introduced, so you're seeing the very beginnings of the components that will create a very successful and dynamic pedestrian-friendly site. In this case, we've got surface parking, which is serving the City Hall. One thing I didn't mention is where there's a street which runs through, runs adjacent to City Hall between the Civic Plaza and the, and the surface parking, and, I let it go and it disappeared on me. And that area creates the opportunity to create a slightly larger space, event space for the Civic Plaza and the event where that retail road could be closed down. And so that would, in fact, increase the size of the Civic Plaza area to hold even slightly larger events that could spill over into the diagonal view corridor, which is coming down from the corner of Yuma and Estrella up to the Civic Plaza. Thank you, Brett. So those start to be the elements that start to create the infrastructure, the backbone for what would happen next in Phase Two, whereas Phase Two, you start to see the introduction of retail and office to frame Retail Street, as I was describing, coming along here, and start to really create a strong, a strong heart to the center, a very dynamic, mixed-use sort of Phase Two. Phase Three, we start to establish the Civic Park with, not only the Civic Park, but the, a couple of important edges with the Residential and the Multi-Generational Centers, certainly frame the project. Moving on to Phase Four, further refining and defining the Civic Park area with Performing Arts Center and a retail and residential mixed-use development in the purple, further defining those edges of the Civic Park, and then the Office and Retail down by the, down at the corner there. And of course, the final, Phase Five, being the City Hall expansion, and really sort of finishing off the Civic Plaza, and then the Office and Retail in yellow up at the corner, creating a very, very dynamic and successful, successful development. Now, we're going to take a little look at the City Hall portion of the project, give you an update on what's been going on with that, some thoughts about the character of the City Hall and some of the architecture, and how we're responding to the environment, responding to, embracing the design guidelines of the sun and shade, and really embracing the sustainable aspect of this project, in which both the City Hall and the Library intended to be a lead silver projects. In this case, what we're seeing is the south elevation, we're looking north towards the City Hall, and we're seeing is a south elevation. In this, in this environment, you get a lot of good natural light, you get a lot of good natural light during the winter months, whereas you get a lot of solar gain that you want to avoid in the summer. So we've introduced a lot of glass, but we've also introduced a lot of shade structures that will create, help reduce solar gain and create thermal comfort, a lot of natural light, good views, and then also create shading patterns as a result of some of the, some of the shade structures that are on there. On the east side, we're looking at some, creating an elevation which relates to some of the more earthy structures that you might find, some of the desert-style of materials, natural stones, you know, warm metals, in a very sort of, a very solid feeling, with a very solid feeling to it. On the north side, we've got a bunch of great north light, we can take advantage of that. Again, good daylight, good views, it's looking off to the, off towards the future Civic Park to the north there, as well as a very transparent, retail sort of oriented development that would be pedestrian-friendly and encourage, you know, that sort of transparency that you see with successful pedestrian environments. The material palette, this is a little bit of a sample of what we've been looking at, again, drawn from the environment, drawn from the, you know, the area of Goodyear and the surrounding Phoenix area, looking at warm materials that address some of the nature of the characteristics. Funny story, the picture up there in the top left-hand corner we took when we were here a few months ago is a beautiful sunset, and we've really found that inspirational as part of developing these materials, is that sort of character, that warmth that you find, that's so, so much a part of this environment. We're taking a look at now the, a little bit more refined version of those ideas I was discussing. We're looking, this is the south facade, and in this case, we're looking at some of the landscape features that are part of this, with some heavy rock walls, landscape walls that become, emerge out of the ground and become part of the architecture. The entry canopy, creating a fabulous shading structure, creating great patterns on the ground, as well as creating a sense of entry into what will be the main entry of the project. Excuse me, that's my phone. Should've turned off. The water feature, a linear water feature, which is coming off, coming diagonally through the site, creating some nice cooling effects, psychological cooling effects. And the Council Chamber's roof is a metal roof, creating a very distinctive iconic form for the City Hall. The glass wall, taking advantage of the north light and combination, or sorry, taking advantage of the sunlight coming in, but controlled with the sun control shelves coming in, as well as a sun control trellis, so really taking advantage of that sunlight. Now, we're looking more towards the north side, looking back down the diagonal towards Yuma and Estrella. The entry that you'd be able to see from the Main Street side as you approach the building. There's even, there's a small retail component of this, which is the café, which fronts onto Main Street, further reinforcing the retail nature of Main Street. The north light, the windows have all been oriented, in this case, you'll see there's sort of a little bit of a saw to them, which was intentional, so that we would take advantage of as much north light as possible, and reduce the amount of solar gain, and still get, you know, wonderful natural light and views coming into the space. The stone wall recalling the materiality of the site, and the sun trellis with a distinctive feature to it, and certainly taking, and creating sun and shade patterns on the building, as well as creating solar control, with some potential areas, potential balconies along the upper recessed portion, and making sure that on our west side, we're taking, we're, you know, controlling the sun on that side as well, being very cognizant of the sustainable nature of this building. Now, I'd like to ask if the folks in the back can start the first animation. We have an animation here. Oh, looks like here we go. So here we are down on Main Street, and we're moving in towards the building, a little fast there, into the north side, and you begin to see some of the articulation of those pieces on the north side, creating some interest levels, some canopies and so forth, creating more of a retail feel. Moving over here, a little bit more bird's eye, you're seeing the sun, the trellis, and as we move around some of the rock wall, and to the Council Chamber with its distinctive form and roof. And now I can see, looking up that diagonal towards the White Tank Mountains, which you'd see if you looked further up there, and swinging around, you see the glass volume and the entry canopy, and we're swinging back down, and see the café over there in the corner. Okay. If we could go back to the PowerPoint presentation now, thank you. All right. Looks like we'll go past this one. And now, just talk a little bit more about, I mentioned the Civic Plaza, and creating a, really a synergy between the private and public development. As I was talking before, the ultimate vision of the Civic Plaza is to create a very synergized space that takes advantage of not only the civic portion of the project, but also takes advantage of the private development and some of the retail portion of it, to create a very energized, active area that's just fun to be a part of. We're going to take a look at a view, an eye-level view of what it might be like to be down in this, in this area. The intent is for the Civic Plaza, and you're seeing there's, it's very blurred where the edge of the plaza is and where the road is, and that's very intentional. The intent is that the road that goes through here, that cars are invited in, but it's primarily a pedestrian event. And so it's made to feel very pedestrian, so that the cars are welcome, but it's really all about people and moving around there. It creates a nice, a nice energy to it that will create a very active and open space. You're seeing a little bit of the civic, sorry, the Council Chambers off to the left there, and some of the mixed-use residential, perhaps with office on top, sorry, mixed-use retail with some residential perhaps on top, or some office mixed in, some outdoor seating areas, and a very lively, lively, lively spot. We're going to take a little look at the diagonal view, and we're going to take a look, looking up the diagonal towards the City Hall, and again, focusing in a little bit on the Civic Plaza and the potential sort of views that you might find. You can see, we're looking towards the Civic Plaza, there's water features, and perhaps some restaurants, cafes, you know, retail spaces to hang out with, a very comfortable environment with planting, and certainly lots of stuff going on. Now, I'd like to turn a little bit to the Goodyear Branch Library and talk a little bit about that. The library is located just north of City Hall, and really becomes the other anchor point for the development of Phase One of the project. There's the arroyo, which is becoming the northern edge, creating the northern edge of the library. The diagonal, which is establishing a connection with City Hall and the park. And the library seeks to create a greater connection with the park, and blur the distinction between building and park, so that the park, the library appears to grow out of the park, and bits of the landscape start to introduce themselves into the library. And you'll see that a little bit more in the, in the animation that we have here. The entry is located off of Main Street, further reinforcing the importance of Main Street and the pedestrian activity along there, as well as becoming sort of a focal point as you're looking down Main Street or up from the City Hall as to its location. This is a little bit of a, this is the south perspective, so we're looking south towards the main entry of the library, with the curved wall embracing the, embracing Main Street. We're creating roof overhangs, as well as trellises, that help to create shade patterns, since it's on the south side, and really creating a formalized main entry that focuses on Main Street. And now, I'd like to ask if perhaps the folks in back could start the second animation, thank you. And this one, we're starting to see, as I was mentioning, the park coming up and really becoming the, going up into the, into the library. And as we turn around, we're coming to the north side, we've got fantastic opportunity for reading areas and stacks, where lots of good natural light can come in. We're moving more towards the back-of-house area, pointing on the Service Road, and then we're swinging back onto Main Street. You can start to see some of the shade and shadow that are going on, as well as the main entry, lots of glass, natural materials that are related back to the, back to the environment. And it looks like we're going to spin around again here. But this is probably a good spot to stop the animation, if you don't mind, back there. And then we'll go back to the, finish up with the PowerPoint. Okay, let's see. And I believe that's all we have for tonight. I'd like to open it up for any questions you have on any information that we've shown, be happy to talk to you about it.
Questions, comments?
It's beautiful.
Yeah, I would echo that.
Absolutely beautiful.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's been, it's been a lot of hard work on the team, and I'll let them know that you enjoyed it.
And a very, it was a great presentation. I could actually visualize what you're talking about.
Fantastic.
So well.
Just very well done.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Good job.
Go for it. No, 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 that's fine, because I have a bunch, too.
No, I, you know, I think it's fabulous. I think it's a great plan, I think you guys did a wonderful job, you know, and I'm really looking forward to it. And the one comment that I have, the one thing that really jumped out at me, really probably doesn't belong at this meeting, but I'm going to say it anyway. You know, when you look at the circulation and the plan of all four quadrants, and I, it's probably not, or it's probably too late, and I'm probably in the minority, because y'all, some of you know what I think about traffic circles, but man, I think, I think we need to have traffic circles at both intersections of Goodyear Boulevard and Estrella Mountain Parkway, you know, and I think, I think that will enhance the pedestrian feel of the thing. I think it will facilitate traffic control. And for all of you that are involved, I would love to have you find a way to put traffic circles in those two intersections. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to Commissioner Williams, or?
No response, thank you.
Okay, no response, okay. I have a number of comments that I want to make. You know, first of all, I've seen this presentation several times when it was presented to council and some other times that it's been presented. My first question is, on the library, when you did the spin-around on the east wall, I thought the material palette from City Hall was going to be carried onto the library east wall also, so that the two buildings tied together. Is that the plan, and the animation just never caught up to it, or where are we on that one?
Yeah, I know there's been some discussion about that, and yeah, to be, it hasn't been developed yet to that point. What we were doing was using what we had had, and that's something I know the team is going to be looking at, is how to stitch those two together, and look at the materiality, and how City Hall and the library can start to talk to each other with their material choice. So, yeah, this presentation, it hadn't, that ideas, those ideas hadn't come forth yet, but that is a plan that will.
Okay.
Yeah, when I bring it to council, that's something we'll be discussing.
Brett, is this the appropriate time to talk about the prohibited uses? Okay. Let's go to table four, tab 4C, please. And for those of you who have the book, also go to tab 11D. And on the left-hand column of prohibited uses, you have about four or five items down, you have a freestanding food or quick-service restaurant as a prohibited use. Yet, on tab 11D, you have a freest- Yet on tab 11D, you have a freestanding milkshake shop in the middle of the park, which I think is a great idea. So you have a conflict here. So I don't know how you want to, come on up because there's, I have a list of these things that we're going to go through.
Okay.
And please identify yourself for the public record.
I'm Mary Pampu with Langford and Associates.
Okay.
The kind of project manager for this.
Right.
I think when we developed this list of prohibited uses in the development agreement, there were several. There was a lot of back and forth between the city and us. I think with this particular one, what we did, what we wanted to avoid was to have a fast food with a drive-through like a McDonald's or Burger King. So I think a more boutique, fast food restaurant like this, we would obviously love to see this as well.
Okay.
I think the whole intent was to not have a drive-through.
I think, you know, all I'm saying is somebody who is gonna, you know, somebody who wants to build the malt shop in the park is going to look at this and say, well, you know, and some bureaucrat that isn't as enlightened as our staff is, is going to say, oh, no, you can't do that. So I think we need to at least refine that a little bit before this becomes a final draft. Okay, next item, if you go further down on this list, you talk about costume shops and wig shops as being prohibited uses. Probably the best-known costume shop in Phoenix, Arizona is on the corner of McDowell and Seventh Avenue and is a destination as part of the Arts District. I have some trouble with a costume shop and a wig shop, you know, being a prohibited use. I mean, these are, you know, one, they create traffic, they're family oriented, the wig shop, maybe a high-end wig shop, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I think, you know, Marie Antoinette needed a wig, so somebody in Goodyear might need one too.
I may someday too, after this project is over.
Okay. I'll just leave my comments at that. You don't have to answer that one.
I will ask you a question about that. Wouldn't that be more appropriate for the northwest quadrant?
That one isn't in final PAD yet. A wig shop?
Yeah. In the entertainment.
You mean in the northeast?
In the northeast, yeah, the entertainment area.
I'm just making comments. Okay, next question is, further down on this list, you talk about a transit terminal, except to the extent required by government authorities having jurisdiction. So if Greyhound wanted to have a bus stop here, they couldn't. But if the city wanted to have, you know, Metro South come in, they could. Is that the way I should read this?
Terminal versus a Greyhound bus station? Yeah, I mean.
I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm, you know.
You know, I think as we, as we develop these pieces and they come forth in a, in the site plan submittal and we have these uses, I think that we're going to want to look at these uses. I think that what we were trying to do with this list was, we obviously want to do a very upscale, good development. So I think that probably some of the things that are on this list are not, probably not the right things, but I think we'll find that, find that out as we go through the development of this.
Well, I think, I think the majority of the stuff you have on the list are not the right things. I'm just pointing out some things that I think got lumped in there and maybe we ought to have a second thought on them. So.
We're certainly, we're certainly interested in having that discussion.
Okay. Last item is on the right-hand column, mostly, pretty far down on the list where you talk about pool or billiard hall or dance hall being a prohibited use. Wouldn't we want a nightclub in this area? I mean, aren't we trying to have a 24/7 type of environment? And a nightclub is, is different than a pool hall, but it's not so different from a dance hall?
I think that what we were talking about there was to just have, just have, have a pool hall as the only use or a dance hall as the only use. I think you're right on. I think a nightclub would be great in this quadrant because you're, it will generally, it'll definitely help the ambiance of the space. But, you know, if we have a nightclub that's, that also has restaurant, I mean, that's the kind of thing that we're thinking of as well.
Okay. I, like I said, I just wanted to point, you know, I spent the time reading the list, so I thought I'd give you my comments on that. Okay. Next item is, and I think this got answered, but on tab 15B, you have the office and retail on the north of Northwest Main Street is, you have it indicated to be nine floors at 92 to 98 feet tall. And then on Yuma Road where you have an office and retail building, you also, you have a six-floor office, but it also indicates 98, 92 to 98 feet. Is that, are we having a six-floor on one side and a nine-floor on the other?
Yeah, that's correct. The idea is that there'd be a six-floor where, exactly, the floors are correct, it's the heights aren't correct.
Got it, fine. Okay, next, last item. 19B, which is the landscape palette. I'm not a native of Arizona, but I've lived here for 12 years and I have mesquite trees get knocked down. I mean, all you do is plant them and put three stakes around them and you hope they stay up. Why, is this just an example or this is a bad example of what you're not going to use?
Well, it's something that we had intended to use and there is an issue that if it's not maintained properly, if the irrigation design is not installed in a certain way, that you do have, the roots will, will stay shallow and the issue that you're talking about where the trees fall over can happen. The way that, that we intend to address it is through proper maintenance that will be part of the CCNRs as well as proper irrigation design. What really the intent of the irrigation design is to create a deeper irrigation design so that the roots will go deeper. And what happens a lot of times is the water's so close to the surface, the roots don't go any farther. And so if you take the irrigation design, do that properly, it will help the trees to establish themselves more firmly and, and take care of the issue where they stabilize the tree.
Are there other trees that we could use that, you know, that tend to grow deep roots versus, I mean, the mesquite just seems to have a big problem. And as much as I admire proper maintenance even planned, I, I, you know, I would, I would caution you on that. The other, the other tree issue that I have is the palaverdi tree, which puts out an incredible amount of pollen. I mean, it's a beautiful tree, but there's a lot of people who are allergic to it and it's like April, March, end of March, fall of April is just hell for those people. And so that's another one that I would just say, well, have, think about that for some of our citizens. Other than that, I thought, I honestly, I thought it was great, it's still great stuff. So I'm just nitpicking away here. Okay, does anybody from the public would like to make a comment? Any other comments from the commission before I finish or before I let the public do their thing?
No.
No, no, no. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner?
Traffic circles, roundabouts.
Roundabouts, I like roundabouts. New Jersey, bring them on. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment? You want to make, I have a question for you, Brett. This is the, of all the quadrants in the city center, everybody, all the four quadrants are in initial PAD stages, is that correct?
Chairman Gelsner.
And this is the first one that's going to final PAD?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, SUNMP has final PAD zoning for their three quadrants and this is final PAD zoning for the city's northwest district. So this would complete the final PAD zoning for all four quadrants in the city center.
Wait, how can, this is only one quadrant?
That's correct. SUNMP received approval of their three PADs in 2008, June of 2008.
Were those all final PADs?
Correct.
Okay. All right, you want to make a comment? Go for it.
Yes, just the final comment, just wanted to note, let the commission know that staff has been working with SUNMP on some of the technical details associated with the specific area plan. And we mentioned this when we were going through the specific area plan amendment. SUNMP, we've been working with SUNMP on some of the details related to the city's site plan and also some of the, and also reported, also related to some of the concerns that they have associated with the specific area plan that are outside of the, this PAD amendment or PAD request and also outside of the city's specific area plan amendment that we recently processed. And staff will continue to work with SUNMP on, on those issues and we will continue to move forward.
Any other comments from the public?
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, just one more point of clarification. In the staff report, I believe it was under the section of the citizen review meeting. There was some discussion in the citizen review meeting about the possibility of single-family residential development being in the city's northwest district. And the, the language in that staff report was, was only referring to the city's northwest district. In the staff report, we noted that single-family residential is not, does not have the ability, ability to develop in the city's northwest quadrant. And so just wanted to be clear that, that we were referring to the northwest district.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any, any motion now to recommend approval of this and then we will, Joe, do I, do I do a motion first then discussion or discussion first then motion? Okay. Can I have any comments from the commission concerning this?
Fine.
Okay, then I would like a motion to recommend approval and transmittal to the city council of this final PAD, please.
I move that we recommend 08200013 as written to the city council.
I second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano and a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Okay. Next order of business, I'm going to open the public hearing for case 092200002, zoning ordinance text amendment, Article III, residential zoning districts. And Katie Wilkin will be making the presentation. Take it away, Katie.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission. You probably remember this item from our last commission meeting. It was brought to you on work session. We are making changes to Article III, the residential sections. There are no new changes from the work session to report to you. We have decided to, at this time, not delete the manufactured home subdivision district, so it is still part of the zoning ordinance at this time. In the future, if we feel we do want to go back and maybe clean that up, we could do that as a separate action, a separate zoning text amendment, but at this time, that is still remaining in. The agricultural preservation district is still being deleted from the zoning ordinance for clarification purposes as we went over at the work session. And all the other changes are the same. We have not received any comment from the public on any of the proposed changes to the text amendment. And so unless there are any questions from commission or the public, at this time, we, staff recommends that commission recommend approval of this text amendment. This isn't an ordinance which you saw in the last two zoning ordinance text amendments because we're going to start holding up, holding them up now until we have a big group to adopt together. Because there are cross-references within the zoning ordinances, so we can't adopt each one individually from now on. So we are asking for approval and that will conclude my presentation. I can take any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions of the, of Katie? Ladies? Okay, I have two. I actually read this thing, you know. Just want you to know that. Question, on page three dash five, item eight, we talk about basically casitas. Why, you know, we say that they are prohibited from being rented to a separate entity. And my question then really is, where would Cato Kalin live if he were to move to Goodyear? And, and, but realistically, many municipalities have houses and carriage houses and these kinds of things. And would it not be wiser to maybe say, over a certain square footage, it could be rented? You know, I'm just saying, I think the blanket prohibition is something that we want to look, we should look at.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner. That's a very good question. Currently within the zoning ordinance, we allow casitas and it is silent on whether or not they can be rented. It's not exactly clear. But one thing that is in there, the zoning ordinance currently, is that you cannot have a full kitchen. And typically, we mean that, that you can't have a range. And so we wanted to allow units to have a full kitchen, have a range and allow residents to build those casita units or, you know, over the garage units with a full kitchen if they so chose. And then we put in this regulation that they shouldn't be leased or rented because we understood that was the original intent that's currently in the zoning ordinance by not allowing a full kitchen so that people couldn't rent out those units since they wouldn't have a full kitchen. So that's why it's in there. If it's the wish of the commission to recommend that we allow residents to rent out those accessory units, we can certainly look into that further or take that recommendation. But that was the purpose of writing it in there right now because that was how staff understood the original intent of the zoning ordinance currently.
Ms. Chairman, if I might add, it's a good point that you do, that you raise. Maybe it's, it's an item that we need to bring back as a separate amendment. And here's why, because once you start doing that additional dwelling, you're basically going beyond the concept of a single-family residence district. You now have two residences on that property, the Cato residence plus the, the main residence. And to many neighborhoods, that is problematic. Now, there may be means and some cities may do this by a use permit or other process because in some situations, larger lots, it may be appropriate, smaller lots, maybe not. There's different ways to handle that. But we, as Katie indicated, we wanted to clarify, one, that you could have this for your mother-in-law, otherwise, as long as it wasn't rented or, or leased separately. But you raise a good concept, though.
You know, my issue is on a, you know, on a, on a small or single-family lot, yes, a mother-in-law apartment, quote unquote, or whatever you want to call it, is, is an acceptable, you know, maybe an acceptable use. But if you go into some of our other communities where they're developing, you know, custom lots on the mountainside, well, maybe they want to have a gatehouse. And eventually, maybe, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, I think we're being too inflexible and, and I would ask that maybe we re-study that issue or at least think about a way that depending on the square footage of the lot and the ratios and the coverages, maybe we could come up with something that would work to everybody's behalf. Enough said on that. Okay, next.
I have, I have a related comment, I guess. You know, looking down the road, if we have some universities here and they grow and flourish and you're going to start to have students who need housing in that area, that's going to play into this issue, isn't it?
Ms. Chairman, yes, it, yes, it can, but again, I, I think we have to proceed cautiously on this. And so in relative to these amendments, we didn't, we chose not to, to get into that area because it may be a significant policy change and one which I think maybe warrants maybe separate deliberation and, and also involving our neighborhood associations and other ones. Because I think you have to do it correctly or else you may have unintended consequences.
Totally agree. I just wanted to raise the point. I want to put it on your radar.
Okay.
Commissioner Gelsner.
Yes, ma'am.
I happen to totally disagree with you and I would not like to be in the neighborhood who somebody is renting to students. That's not what I would want. And I understand what you're saying in larger lots. My concept is if you're buying these larger lots with custom homes, why are you renting? I, I, I just, as a homeowner, I would not like my neighbor to have the ability to rent out their casita.
Point taken. Obviously, there's disagreement on the commission on this subject, which is fine. Just so you know, they couldn't rent it to a student unless they were 55 or older.
No, they can be 19. They can live there at 19.
No, the prime, where, in a, in a, in an age-restricted community, the primary, primary owner, renter, et cetera, has to be either, has to be 55.
Can I, can I say something, I think when you start opening up to renting, you're talking about all communities, you can't just say the age restricted, and I know there's several builders up in Estrella Mountain putting the casitas on top, and I, I would agree, I think you're putting too many families on a lot, and it's different than someone using it as a studio or for their, their kids or their mother-in-law or family members. And that, again, if you're paying for some of those mountainside lots to start renting them off in piecemeal and people building casitas here and there to sell out, I think that's, that's a problem, and you're gonna definitely have a, a lowering of the neighborhood. Having been a college student and seeing how many people you can pack into a room, you'd be surprised.
Mr. Chairman, in the last community I lived in, we did have, we, we had problems with, with additional traffic, mail delivery, garbage, there were several issues associated with, with having rental units in the back of homes, and so we got complaints from the neighbors and we had to do some enforcement because we had a similar provision in our ordinance where we did have problems in neighborhoods, I just thought I'd pass that on.
And might I add, we have a lot of lovely, brand-new apartments being built right now in Goodyear, right around the universities.
That the students could move to.
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peters?
What's the, is there an ordinance on if I have a five-bedroom house and I decide I want to rent one of the bedrooms out? Is there anything related?
No, there's no regulations against that.
But if, but if it's a casita, you can't rent it.
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Do we have a, an ordinance on how many people can be in a residence? Because I know some jurisdictions do.
Don't we have something about unrelated families?
Katie, you want to answer that?
Six or fewer unrelated family members are considered one household unit, so six college students could rent one house together and be considered a family.
And I think there's a difference when you have the...
And their girlfriends, their girlfriends.
Yeah, you could, and, and other friends who have no place to live. But I think when you have the rental room, you have a little bit of a situation because you have, under one roof, you have more of a stable, the same as someone staying there, you're not gonna have people moving in kind of like a rental community.
Well, there is obviously disagreement on the commission on this item, however, I still think it's worthy of study. And whether it comes back or not is, is up to staff, I'm not gonna push this dead horse. Okay, next question, Katie, page 332. You have a diagram of a house with the fence, what I'm most concerned about, or what I, I guess, what I'm seeing is, we would have, if, if this goes into force, people would not be able to basically fence in their lot around the perimeter, have a gate into their driveway, and that's it. And I, boy, I'll tell you, when I drove through Mobile or toured Mobile, I sure thought I saw a lot of what we're prohibiting, and what, what kind of comments have we gotten from, you know, our southern district?
Thank you Chairman Gelsner. The point of this regulation isn't to create this type of standard on a, for one, in an AG district where only farming is taking place or ranching, they can fence the full width of their property. We're trying to look strictly on if there's a residential unit on an AU lot, especially for large lot subdivisions that may spring up in some of the AU districts. It, we just, I, we looked at other cities, this particular regulation came from Glendale. So no, under this, they would not be able to, if their house is on a lot, be able to put the fence right on the property line. It would have to be 20, 20 feet back or the setback.
So, so basically, this would be going in the future, anybody who has a non-compliance use, as long as they maintain their fence parameter, that, they would be okay?
Correct. They would be legal, non-conforming if there are people who have this situation currently on their property.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, the, the current ordinance allows a maximum three-foot-high wall anywhere within the front yard, even for an ag or an AU district, which is 50, 50 feet, 40 feet plus or minus. So actually, this clarification provides them a little bit greater opportunity to do a six-foot-high fence, woven fence, within portions of that front yard.
I'm, like I said, I, when I read it, it was one of those not, I wanted to make, you know, question it because I was on that ad hoc committee and took my lumps. Yes, yes, Mr. Smiths, you want to make a comment?
Chairman Gelsner, I was just making the point that, I'm not sure the diagram intends to mean that you couldn't put a fence all the way across the front and have a gate, unless there was specific language in there that would prohibit that. It, it would, it does require the fence to be set back a little bit farther than what we may have seen in some of the areas currently in, in Mobile.
Okay.
But, the idea is...
Could you guys clear that up, maybe have two diagrams, you know, this is, this is what we want in this situation, this is what's allowed in another situation? Because, you know, when I, like I said, when I read through it, I, I got a little confused.
Well, I think the point, what we're trying to encourage, though, is that the, is that that six-foot-high fence or five-foot-high fence would not be at the property line.
Okay.
For site visibility issues and such, for entering and exiting from the property.
Okay. Other, other comments? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Discussion first, any discussion from the commission? What? Any discussion from the commission? Okay, can I have a motion to approve this text amendment and forward it to council, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 09-220002.
All right, I have a motion from...
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, and I have a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, 5-0, thank you. Okay. The next item of business is case 08-200-0011. And I'm gonna, and David Canning's gonna make the presentation. Just for clarification, this item, because of some notification issues, we will continue it, but we want to make the presentation tonight, so David, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, yes, briefly, both this item, item C, as well as the next item, item D, in both cases, there was a technical error in providing the written legal notice to adjoining property owners within 500 feet of the rezoning request. Not all of the property owners were properly notified by letter, most in part because there's some new residents in the area that weren't picked up. So we apologize for the inconvenience, but because this was posted and, and noticed to some property owners, we, I'm gonna ask David to get a presentation and then see if anyone in the audience wants to speak to the matters, and then we've conferred with the applicant and, and he concurs, and then we, we request that the items be continued for 30 days so we can do the proper notice and also maybe meet with residents in the area that we haven't had the opportunity to do so, the applicant being, to explain their proposal.
Not a problem, that's, that's the plan. David, come on up. Did I open the public hearing? I did now. I opened the public hearing on case 08-200-0011. Planned area development, David Canning's gonna make the staff presentation.
Thank you, thank you Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission. Subject property is located within Palm Valley Promenade, a planned 45-acre commercial center which is bounded by Encanta Boulevard to the north, Bullard Avenue to the west, McDowell Road to the south, and North 145th Avenue to the east. And on this exhibit, the boundaries of Palm Valley Promenade are, Promenade are highlighted in yellow. The applicant is requesting approval of a PAD amendment for parcel four of Palm Valley Promenade, which is highlighted in red on this exhibit, to change the planned land, to change the planned land use from mixed-use commercial to high-density residential, and to increase the maximum allowable building height from 30 to 40 feet. Parcel four is approximately 10 and a half acres in size. This is the conceptual site plan for parcel four of Palm Valley Promenade, and demonstrates how the property could be developed with 188 dwelling units with a maximum density of 18 dwelling units per acre. Staff is recommending several stipulations for this PAD amendment to ensure, or to reduce the impact of future development on adjacent properties. As previously mentioned, staff is recommending that this case be continued so that all residents who own property within 500 feet of the subject property are properly notified. And this concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions of staff? Questions, questions? Okay, anybody? Okay, my turn. David, I have two questions. Stipulation two, the maximum building height shall not exceed 40 feet, is this a deviation from our, did we change the zoning on, you know, multifamily residential like a couple of years ago when we were having all these 30-foot, or am I thinking commercial and hotels and 36-foot?
Chairman, you're, the latter, you were thinking commercial where we did change the building height.
Okay, next question. We talked, item four, we talked about the four units per floor with a single-story unit at the both, at the both ends of the building, and you had said it provides less blocky-type buildings, and my feeling was I would rather see different-sized buildings than just all, you know, cookie-cutter squares put on a presentation. So I'm gonna ask you to, like I said earlier today, tell me why I should approve this item, stipulation four.
Chairman Gelsner and members of the commission, our primary goal is to ensure an attractive streetscape for both 145th Avenue and the Loop Road, and the stipulation which is recommended gives the applicant two options. The first one, of course, is to construct buildings which do not have more than four dwelling units per floor, and that should help reduce the impact of the size and bulk of those type of buildings on the street. The other option is to have larger-sized buildings but also include single-story units. We feel that in the best-case scenario, the applicant should use both of those options, provide perhaps larger-sized buildings with single-story units at the end, and then also the smaller-sized buildings. The applicants, at this time, does not wish to show that, just for the reason being that they could not achieve the maximum allowable density. If they were to, for instance, connect these two buildings together, which currently each have eight dwelling units, and then reduce the amount of dwelling units by one on this end and, and at the other end.
I have, I have an issue with this, David, to be very honest with you, I mean, I, if you look to the south of this, this area, you know, this parcel, there is Lifestyle Fitness, which is the largest, bulkiest, beautiful building that is in the area. And if we're gonna transition from, you know, one area to another area, and we're turning this into a high-density, there, there, I think the builder, and I think the developer should have the option of building both, you know, small and large buildings in the, in the, in the area. And I, and I read the density question, but I just, you know, I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with them coming up with, you know, 16 units in one building and not having, you know, being able to, you know, have, you know, the proper articulations and the proper design elements. I mean, I know we're way far away from it, nobody's gonna do it, but I think the flexibility should be there, especially in this parcel. Commissioners? Comments?
I would disagree with that.
Fine. Obviously, that's...
It's the day I'm just disagreeing with you.
That's a contrarian thing.
I, I guess, from what I, from my understanding, it's, it's just the ones that face what is actually there, I think that they were the Camelot Homes over there, because this is the back of Lifetime Fitness, the only part of Lifetime Fitness that faces this development is the playground for the childcare. So that's all that actually faces the developments. My assumption is the, the one of 145th from what it says, and that there's homes over there, right, there's single-family residence, and that's why we want to not overrent there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the stipulation actually applies, if I'm reading this correctly, to both 145th Avenue.
Okay, and that, that's where the homes are on the other side there.
And the Loop Road. There is actually another stipulation which limits the building heights along 145th Avenue so that buildings could not exceed two stories or 30 feet in height that are within 180 feet of 145th Avenue.
I'm okay with it like that, I, I think that's a good plan with the residential that close together to kind of transition it out, not make it so large.
Other comments?
I totally agree with Commissioner Loretano.
Going down the tubes, this one. Commissioner Williams?
I'm gonna go with the girls, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Peters?
I'm on both sides of the fence, I think both are valid points, but it's really...
You could have them build a casita there for you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, any other comments from the commission on this one? Would the applicant like to come, come forward and help me with this? Obviously, he doesn't, but... Come on, Mitch, come up and let the applicant talk and we can ask any questions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Mitch Rosen with Suncor Development Company. And what you have before you is a result of, candidly, a lot of work between our company and staff. This is a conceptual site plan, Suncor Development Company is not gonna develop this project. There will be a final site plan that will be submitted back to the city for review. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the others, the other comments from your other commissioners, the motivation from staff to put the condition that they have on us with regard to 145th is that transitional use between residential to the east and, and the higher-density product as it moves into the project. They were very protective of the adjacent residential use and wanting to make sure that there was a transitional use, and that's why you see it proposed the way that it is. I, I appreciate your comment with regard to putting the units together, and perhaps some of the developers would want to do that. In this context, this is a relatively small site. It's, you know, you see some of these projects now, 300 and 400 units. This is gonna be higher-end, I think a little bit more intimate as it transitions off of, off of 145th. So that's what the motivation of staff was when they conditioned us to do that. I hope that addresses your question.
I'm on the losing end of this, so, we're not voting, but maybe I'll have a month to lobby.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I tend to view with the ladies also.
Thank you.
Put that on the record.
For, for the record, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Sometimes the chairman is a little out in front of the commission, what can I say? Okay, since, any other public comments on this? Okay, since, uh, any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commission, uh, comments that they want to make? Apologies to the chairman. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue this case to our next meeting. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Can I make one motion to continue both cases, or do we need a?
I think not. I think we, because there are two separate items, and they're in two different locations, so let's handle.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I move we continue case number 082000011 until the next commission meeting in May?
I second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, five-zero, thank you. David, you're up. I'm gonna open the public hearing on case 082000010. Planned area development for tract E of Palm Valley Phase Eight.
Thank you, Mister Chairman and members of the commission. The applicant is requesting approval of a PAD amendments for tract E of Palm Valley Phase Eight. A 7.5 acre parcel generally located at the northeast corner of 159th Avenue and McDowell Road. The specific request is to amend the existing land use for a multifamily medium-density residential with a maximum of 6 to 12 dwelling units per acre to multifamily high-density residential with a maximum density of 18 units per acre. The applicant is also requesting to increase the maximum allowable building height from 30 feet to 40 feet. This is a conceptual site plan for tract E, which demonstrate, demonstrates how the property could be developed in the future with 136 multifamily dwelling units at a density of 18 units per acre. Staff is recommending several stipulations to the PAD amendments in order to reduce the impact of future developments on the residential areas to the north and to the east. As Bob mentioned, staff is recommending that this case be continued so that all property owners are properly notified of, uh, the public hearing. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions of staff? Would the applicant like to address anything on this issue, or we're good to go? Okay, thank you. The chairman, seeing the lack of support, will not question item four on this thing. He'll just save it for the next meeting. I'm going to, anybody? Please come up, identify yourself, and have you filled out one of these cards?
No, sir.
All right, could you fill this, when you're finished, would you fill this out and give this to the clerk, please? Thank you. Okay, please identify yourself for the record.
Sir, my name is John Myers, and I'm a resident that's affected by this proposed amendment to the zoning. And I would just like to say a couple of things. First, we don't have a strong support here today because we weren't notified. The city was unaware that homes had been purchased and lived in. I've lived in mine for almost a year in this community. So I believe that's kind of why we are postponing this. Having said that, I own a home in this community. Our community is a single-level community only. There are no two-story, three-story homes. So first hearing that they're looking for zoning ordinance to put up a potentially 40-foot-tall building, blocking my view of everything, kind of goes against exactly what Suncor themselves developed in my community, because my home is a Suncor home. The second part of that, the road that they want to use to go in and out of this property is one of two ways only into my community. One from McDowell and one from Pebble Creek Parkway. So an additional, how many hundred? Thousand, thousand, 1,200 apartments they're looking to put in there? That's gonna bring 2,000 cars onto a street that's very small for a small neighborhood right there. That was an issue for us as well, that was brought up.
136 units. 136.
136?
Right.
Okay, I, I apologize. The thing here says 100, or 1,000, up to 1,033 units, platted with a variance of 1,661, or 2,694.
That's for the whole plat area, not this parcel? So you're, you're part, you, your home is part of the 1,033?
And unfortunately, since nobody's come to the community yet to discuss this, we got a little note in the mail that maybe you guys understand, but we sure don't, reference the amendments and the zoning, um, ordinances there. When I purchased the home, it was for medium-density only, which means that we weren't gonna have a high-density apartment complex. Anybody who understands apartment complexes, whether they like them or not, it brings in, um, property crimes, as well as vehicular noise traffic and pollution that's gonna come into a neighborhood that was designed solely to be a small residential with a medium density. Having said that, the area is surrounding all of this. They are building numerous apartments. And if they wanted to continue to build apartments and develop an area, which they're, they're not going to develop, they're gonna sell off, because Suncor itself is being sold from their parent company. They have other areas where this mixed use is more by Lifetime Fitness, where I am a member as well, so I understand the area. Those are more of a mixed-juiced area where an apartment complex would fit in better. A large-scale apartment complex does not fit in with the concept of this area, as well as the commercial bills, businesses that have opened up in the area, that are all single-story, they're not big, large, towering buildings. The mall that's still proposed is not a big, large, towering facility. They're all lower, uh, 30 feet or under. Reference the Estrella Falls strip mall that's on that corner. So I would, I would, I guess, beg of you not to allow them to change this to a high-density, to lower my property values further than they've been lowered, and to bring in an area that's gonna bring in a lot more traffic into a small area that shouldn't be used anyway.
Okay. Mister Myers?
Yes, sir.
On one, we will, this item will be continued to the next, um, planning and zoning commission, which is actually the third Wednesday of every month, so I'm not sure what the May?
May 20th.
May 20th. So I would strongly urge you to be here, and any of your neighbors that would oppose this, so the commission can actually listen to your comments.
Mister Chairman, if I might add, now is a good opportunity. Staff's tendency in working with the applicant is that, uh, because we haven't had an opportunity to meet with the residents that are impacted, that we will probably be working to do a neighborhood meeting, citizen review meeting, and contacting the residents, so we can meet informally with them, so we can go through this paper, which I, I agree with Mister Myers, you know, we understand maybe what it says, but the citizen review meeting where we can meet informally, we can walk them through what is being proposed, and, and with the limits, because there is obviously restrictions that are being proposed regards to the height and the number of dwelling units. So in addition to the May 20th public meeting that we'll have, sometime prior to that, we'll be in contact with you or with the applicant, so we can sat, sit down and go through the proposal one-on-one.
Okay, um, one other comment. My predecessor, um, basically, who was chairman and for, of this commission for several years, basically said, and I concur, um, I'm, I'm really sorry, but you did not buy the view. You bought the land that the house sits on. Whatever the people do next to you, if it's legal, so be it.
Right, and it's only legal if this panel decides it is, which is why I'm here to,
I, I understand.
To request that you don't allow it to be legal.
I, but, but I, but I do want you to understand that technically, you did not buy a view of the White Tanks or the Estrellas or anything else.
Oh, no, not neither this or my other home that I own in Goodyear.
Okay.
That's, that's not the point.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Where is your home located, from this?
Sir, do you see on the map one house? I, I don't see a map up here, I'm slipping. I'll show you my map. My home is one of the few that's actually on this map of the 12, 13 that are in there now. I apologize, this is not, these are the models. This isn't, on this map that you'll see here, sir, that was sent to us. That's my other home in Goodyear. Not my home, it's protected.
Right.
That's my house right there, sir.
Could you put that up on the, on the Elmo so that the people at home who are watching can see? Could you point out both your? Turn it the other way. There you go. Nope. One more, there you go. So, please show the proposed property and where your house is.
This is the proposed property.
Okay.
This is one of the two ways in that I discussed.
Right.
159th Avenue. This is their entrance. This is the community here. This is my home. This whole street is now, has homes on it. There's homes down here, there's homes in this cul-de-sac. So there, there are quite a few homes that are actually built in here that are already inside this, this community.
And the mayor lives very.
159th Avenue.
And the mayor lives.
Right north of there.
Just north of you, so I'm sure he'll, he'll be aware of what's going on too. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a question and a request.
Sure.
How, how far is this from Pebble Creek Parkway? This tract.
I think the next major arterial to the east.
I believe 159th would be one-half mile from Pebble, west of Pebble Creek.
I, I have a request, if it's not too onerous. When this comes back, could we see the whole, I mean, could we see from the intersection of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell, you know, north and west, north to, you know, I don't know what the name, Montevista Road, or whatever it is, and west to 159th?
Absolutely.
And secondly, I guess, do we want to continue this one for two months to give you enough time to have your meetings? Or is one month give you sufficient time to do what you need to do?
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Williams, I, I think one month is adequate time for us to get together and, uh, and then, then provide proper notice for the May 20th meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? What, oh, Mitch, come up, I'm sorry.
Oh, shit, excuse me.
It's okay.
My name is Mitch Rosen, again with Suncor Development. I just want to, uh, say one thing with regard to our project. The baseline, the existing zoning on this parcel of land, which is in place at this time, allows 12 units per acre. There was a developer that attempted to do a project on this property with 12 units an acre. That's typically two, two-story product, kind of townhome-type of, of product, and, and they weren't able to do that. I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit more in our next meeting about that. With, with the existing zoning, there was an allowable 84 units on that property, as it is. And what is in front of you is a request to increase the zoning from 12 units per acre to 18 units per acre. So the increase would be from roughly 85 units rounded to about 135 units. So we're talking about that difference. I don't, I don't know, the, the whole idea about master planning and number of total dwelling units, single-family, multifamily, is a system that's put in place to make sure the infrastructure is there to support, if the roads are done correctly. We are, we are simply talking about an increase on this parcel from 12 units per acre to 18 units per acre. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, then, now I'm going to close the public hearing. And commission, any comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to post, to continue this to our next meeting, please.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we continue case number 082000010 until the May 20th, 2009, meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller, second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, ayes have it, five-zero. Okay, this concludes all of our items. The next item is a work session for the commission, and will be on zoning text amendments for commercial industrial districts. Does the commission wish to take a short recess?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Are you okay?
I'm fine.
You're okay.
Do you like five-minute breaks? Do you need one?
No, I'm fine. I don't have, I don't have that full-max problem. Okay, Karen, take it away, please.
Thank you Chairman Gelsner. Steve and I have been working on the commercial and industrial sections of the zoning ordinance respectively, and I'll give you a brief overview. And then if you have some questions or suggestions about commercial, if you could refer them to Steve, and I'll handle the industrial. The primary amendment to the commercial zoning district is the deletion of what is now an obsolete zoning district, that being the central business district. It was originally created to handle the city center areas, and with the approvals of the PADs on those quadrants, that, that district is no longer necessary. The primary amendments to the industrial are the creation of a commerce park district. And we've done this to accommodate demand that we have for certain heavy commercial uses that are more compatible with industrial uses, and certain recreational uses that have space requirements that don't fit in your normal commercial centers.
Karen.
Yes.
Question. On the commercial park district, how does a commercial park differ from a business campus?
We, we looked at both options, and we found that with the requests that the city was getting, it was more geared towards the uses that would be allowed, rather than the style of development. The business park would be more of a, a spread-out, low-campus residential character building, much more green space. We found the need for the city was more for the uses. So in the commerce park, it's, it's gonna be focused on the allowable uses, rather than the design.
Do, do you think we should have two separate categories? If we're, if we're, if we're going through the change, if we're going through this process of, of working through all these amendments and changes, is it, is this the appropriate time to at least consider allowing a business campus? Because if I remember correctly on the general plan, there, there's plenty of people that think they're gonna build a business campus somewhere someday.
I, I think perhaps in the long-term, the city might look towards that. But right now, with this zoning ordinance amendment that we're doing, we're, we're trying to clean things up, we're trying to clarify things, we're trying to, uh, address current issues. And right now, the current issue is, is including these uses. I, I think probably that would be a long-term thing.
Okay.
Also, we're including incidental retail in with the industrial, whereby you could have a certain amount of retail uses associated with a permitted industrial use. A furniture manufacturer could have a, a small amount of retail sales to sell that furniture within his building. Also, we're going to allow a certain amount of limited retail that would service the industrial uses in the commerce park, a sandwich shop, a coffee center, things like that. We've also created, or not created, we're implementing the use matrix, same as Katie did with the residential districts. We have delineated certain uses based on their characteristics, scale, location. We've categorized certain uses based on their characteristics. Is it all indoors? Is it some indoors, some outdoors, all outdoors? And then we've identified certain large-scale, open-air uses that would be approved through the special use zoning district approval process.
Questions of Ms. Craver?
Or Steve. Don't forget Steve.
Well, Steve hadn't made, oh, do you want to make a separate presentation?
Yeah, if you have, those were just kind of the general things that we're working on. We're gonna bring them back to you again next month, more refined. But if you have any specific commercial questions, Steve's the man, and I'll handle the industrial.
Questions, 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 questions.
If you think we're heading in the right direction?
Oh, I think, I, I, I really like the matrix, and I, and I like the fact that when I read through the zoning, the original ordinance, I saw a lot of red being deleted. And the matrix is solving a lot of issues for us. And, and I, you know, want to commend you and Steve and Katie publicly, and all the rest of the people on staff who've been working through this, and our senior management, who is, who are using this slack time to actually accomplish some good stuff. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Yeah, one, one of the things, you mentioned all the. Yeah, one, one of the things, you mentioned all the red. It was, in the industrial districts, and Steve can speak to the commercial, very, very specific listing of uses, and a lot of them, people don't even do anymore. So we, we've, as I said, categorized them based on types of materials, type of processing, type of truck traffic, so we can, as new things come along, too, we can also lump them in as, as approvable uses as well.
Great. Other comments?
We're going to have a drive-through body piercing studio?
With massage.
With massage? It'll be in the adult, it's in the adult business park.
I'm sorry.
All right. And on that note, yes, yes...
Mr. Chairman, I'll just take your time, maybe just to brief you on our tent. You know, this is for work session, we're going to bring this back in May for your consideration. As Katie alluded earlier, we're getting now into these very, we're, we're going through the entire zoning ordinance. So you'll be seeing in the future, the next one would be actually regards to the PAD zoning district, and we have some items in there, and some issues that we want to clear up. After that, there's some miscellaneous general provisions, and there's a landscaping section, then followed by administration and special use. So we're going to be continuing to bring these forward to you. As Katie indicated earlier, though, now we're getting to, we did the signs and the parking, and they're all kind of like standalone. These other articles in yours have crossover and references to other sections that we can adopt without adopting it altogether. So our intent is to continue to bring these forward to you for action and recommendation for approval on each of the article individually, but we won't be taking them to council for adoption, as we did with the signs and the parking, because of the cross-references. We'll wait till we have them all recommended by you, and go through this process of hearing. And we, prior to each one of these, before we bring to the Commission, we put on our website, we notice our subscribers on our...
E notification.
E notification for their review, and that's the public process. So we'll be going through the public process for each one of these, but basically stopping at the Planning Commission, and then, when they're all acted upon by the Planning Commission, then we'll take one ordinance adoption to council.
Are you going to take a shot at putting it on the consent agenda for council, or do you think it's too much for them to swallow?
That would probably be too much.
Well, some of them won't read it, so. Enough said. Any other comments on the work session? All right, I'm going to close the hearing on that. Staff communications. Harvey, do you want to brief the Commission on our downfall from some of the events at council this past week, or should I?
I'll let you do that. You probably can do it in a more colorful manner than I can.
Okay, the, just for the record, the Burger King hours on the corner of Van Buren and Sarville, did I get that one right? Close? That one. The extended hours were approved by council on a six-to-one vote. The...
Humans.
Humans, Sarville, okay, I'm sorry. And then the canopy sign for the gas station was approved, and we were over, we, our four-three vote was overridden by their four-to-three vote, so...
Oh, it was a four-three.
It was a very close, it was a very close thing, but they've, council has opened Pandora's box, I will publicly say, and I am disgusted with that, that approval. Strongly noted. Harvey?
That's not how I would have reported it, but that's fine.
Some of us agreed with council, I would know.
I actually agreed with you on that one.
I see.
What's the sign?
I know.
Yeah.
Harvey, any other staff communication? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.